Okay, call the ready order at seven oh one. And ask their standards for the first week. Alex, if you could leave us in the first week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Pam, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. You?
I'm good, thank you for being here. You have good follow up?
Um, Aro?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin? Hubbard? Michelle's?
Present.
Keo.
Here. So, the last thing today. Call the soon reps.
Oh, sorry. Um, Alex?
Present.
Aaron?
Present.
My apologies.
I'm good. I don't see. Uh, it's a rule of the meeting minutes from our regular city council meeting of the board of defense. One twenty-two. We find it different, thank you. Second by Fisher. Uh, yeah. Yeah, it is. Okay, yeah. We're going to talk. You know, Pam, yes, we have a follow up to rule the agenda.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Aro?
Yeah.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. What's your three six zero? Thank you. Do we have a right of honor room?
Yes. I'm not seeing here.
All right, we're gonna see who will come back for the right to show up. We're expecting our honor to be on the line, I believe. Uh, so.
So, is there a ready to hear about our? Uh, I don't think I have.
That's okay, we'll come back to when, when we, when this here. Let's go down to eight for rule of the agenda first.
Do you have a rule of the agenda as intended?
And rule by Fisher, they can. The second by Cousins, like a thought. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Tell them that there was additional staff update to that on the change. It doesn't look like a town, you call both to rule the agenda.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Fisher?
Yes.
Aro?
Yeah.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. What's your theories, thank you. That if you'll just keep on for a minute, I appreciate it. And we are down to, uh, kind of, uh, declaration of contracts of interest. As we continue this meeting.
I was gonna check that section.
About, um, it's down.
We've done something wrong. That's what I'm gonna do. I don't know, we're just talking, just talking, I don't know, I didn't have any view.
We're not so sad, we're not so sad. I'm gonna, I'm gonna. What's that? So, we're gonna work. Okay. All right, any other? How much for this decoration is on here? Okay, well, do you want something else, data later, thank you, Zach. We have no well appearance this evening. Your I O G. So, down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak tonight on any topic? It's not on the agenda, otherwise. I haven't seen no one in the audience, is there anybody online? I don't see anybody, right? Okay, we're gonna go down with this time. So, we're down to, uh, communications. The comments on the, uh, appointment meeting.
Is that only the hour or what?
Yeah.
Um, I also, the C P A, the something for, you know, I don't think I've got very nice inputs, but that may depend, if that's correct.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe the right of the gate items to.
Tell them that, but some, I think that needs to be, like, canceled or set canceled or something.
Okay. Very good, we're going to our first report then. Right, our first reporters are our highest director, treasurer, and assessor. Where are you, Derek?
Right now, it's all assessing all the time.
All assessing all the time.
Not really, lots of going on. Um, you have your own reports. Um, I just want to mention somehow September's, um, cash balance has got in there along with December, so you just get extra information this time. Um, and the one thing I just want to point out is that there is twelve thousand dollars that's assigned for adaptive play equipment that was a recent donation. And that's how I chose to record it in there, so it's available once, um, the local partner has done. So, and I have no other updates.
Everything seems through all of our balance and jacket. What did you read?
Zach, uh, this is because I'm dumb with accounting. On page ninety-four and ninety-seven, there are different numbers for cash balance available for specific uses.
Yeah.
Could you help them sort through?
Sure, it's just thanks that, um, they should be relatively close usually, but it's, it's not that most over budget, like in revenue or, um, over budgeting expenses, I can tweak those. Those numbers. It's just basically taking what, what is in your balance sheet, adding the current revenues available. Or the current revenues and expenditures.
All right, let me see.
Yeah, it will fluctuate, um.
On the water report.
This might not be coming to you, and it's not planning, you'll answer with limiting. I experience generally to accept any, any thing here where it tells us what our fixed revenues are annually and what our fixed expenses are annually. I'm trying to get a sense of, and, and so I have this under different funds, I just need to see, uh, uh, better running funds, that goes along with the, based on like, these are the things like that. So, not including, you know, I'd be curious to know from like, what their gap in low and like, what are fixed expenses, if you're imagining that possible. But if you know that off the top of your head, it's like, maybe you've never heard of it, it's when you start talking about the budget.
Well, actually, we'll be in several places, um, we'll be in audit. We lose. Um, it's, it's in several places, you'll see it in more detail in the budget. But by fixed revenue, are you just talking about the revenue that we get all the time, or?
Right, like, what can we count on annually?
Correct.
To get in, and what can we count on annually to spend without, like, the program or something like that?
So, a majority, the way, when we budget, we budgets, um, kind of what you're talking about, what we expect. And then, at the end of the year, when we get your audit, those numbers are gonna be different, most likely, and, and a lot of that's because of either other revenue that comes in. I, we have kind of a catch-up for things that are unusual in other revenue, or grants that we get one time, or the overpayment of the, or not overpayment, but excess payment of stabilization funds. So, you'll see that when, when the budget documents come. But it's also, you'll see it in audits. Um, I generally do not break revenue out in this report, although I certainly could, if possible, like me. It just takes longer. Um, but yeah, I could get to that pretty easily. So, reports are literally just a socket in the computer.
The, 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 um, the things of the militaries of this, um, tax, a lot of the best free. You know, this system, this people, like, activate tax.
Time thing, unless you know typically the city does add to the general population unless you have a major capital project like that. That you're planning on dipping in. The other significant projects in the city, not necessarily down one with the grand street improvements. We're in fiscal year twenty one, jumping over into the water and sewer funds. It's like we had the headworks project in the sewer fund. The capital contributions in the water and sewer fund, one thing I'd like to report to you because it kind of gives you a gauge for the activity going on in with development and that type of thing, how many people are tapping in in the city. So in twenty twenty one, we had four hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. In twenty twenty, it was a hundred and three. Now, twenty twenty was kind of an anomaly because of COVID. A year before now, it was three hundred and sixty eight thousand. So four hundred and fifty four thousand this year, three strong, it's combined water and sewer. The you did pay down six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the water and sewer fund principal debt, under debt. No new debt in the water and sewer funds. And you did have the twenty twenty one capital improvement bond that you would have had million dollars, which you're just now starting to dispense. And you paid out three hundred and eighty one thousand dollars in principal. So that's through your streets and your general. Last thing, I'd like to talk a little bit about pensions, I know that's is interesting here. You actually are significantly paying down the net pension liability and you've done that, you know, with, you know, purposefully. And you planned for that and it's really showing in the bottom line the last couple of years. You are now up to ninety percent funded and that pension liability is down to four hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. You have a four point eight five five total liability, but you have four point three six nine million set aside in trust for that liability. Giving you a net pension liability of four hundred and eighty six thousand dollars. So that's coming down significantly each year and you know where the city is putting in extra each year. Like I said, you're consciously doing that, you're budgeting for that and it really does move the needle on that pension liability and it's really coming through in the numbers. So we should be very happy to get ninety percent funded. Also on the post-retiree healthcare, we are adding in this old tab, other post-employment benefits. The total old tab liability is two point four million, but you have two million, two fifty eight in in trust set aside for that. So your net old tab liability is a hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. And you're ninety three percent funded and a nice jump from the prior year on the old tab liability. With the net investment income and extra contributions, I mean, it really, like I said, again, really, you know, that planning, you know, it's been several years now that you've been doing this. It really, I mean, ninety percent funded the prior year or seven percent, we don't usually see jumps like that. So we're very happy to see that and very happy to report that. So with that, if there's any specific questions, again, I'm happy to address them.
Well, what is the date of our last act, or?
For pension?
For the old tab?
For the old tab.
It is twenty twenty, June thirty twenty twenty. We're actually due to do another one this year.
Okay.
You look great every year.
Thanks. Zach?
I'm gonna start off with a variation on what I want to ask. And watch that tell me how many communities we have, roughly an unmodified opinion.
I would say a pretty high percentage of Washington. You know, I can't speak for, I have looked at everyone's audit report, but I do use a lot of community to watch that film. I have to say that many communities, I would say majority of them are very fiscally conservative. You know, they started off as farmers and that mentality is kind of carried forward, even with all the development. You know, in this prosperous question of counties.
What are two things that we could be doing better?
What are two things this year?
Yeah, two things. I told you.
Well, planning for new facilities. The and well, there are new governmental accounting standards for announcements coming up. Next year significantly would be leases, which honestly really doesn't impact council. Murray, what is up to date on all that? And you know, your department has, and I speak for all, you know, they're putting all of them, they're all very they're all very professional, great to work with. They really stay, you know, at their you know, their specialty, their department, and they are at the forefront of all the new things that are being drawn at them. From the federal, state government, you know, they're, we have discussions, they are on top of it tonight. You know, that really goes well with the city. So new pronouncements and things like that, Murray's already, you know, has plans for it and probably templates and everything else. So, you know, that's encouraging standard. I mean, it really is with council's encouragement, you've always, you know, held the bar high. And your stamp really does live up to that. So you're doing that naturally, you know, starts at the top. And that's one of the great things that council's always got.
From this information, are the new facility, we have the bond, the two point five million dollar. How much more bonding are we?
Much more bonding are you?
Yeah, because that's because that's related, I mean, there's a limit to that, right?
Yes.
And you don't like how much, like what's the difference between what?
I don't know, you're not near the cap.
Okay.
You're not near your cap.
We're not anywhere near.
Right.
I, it's, you'll see it in the budget document. I, I think that's something about how to calculate your charter. The state allows us to use stabilization funding in our bonds, like capping, which I generally don't use, I just use the property taxes. Mostly because the formula using a stabilization fund gets most through. But yeah, no, we still have some debt. I mean, we still have, we have available, I personally would not recommend.
Getting near the cap.
Right, maxing that out. I mean, it's kind of like maxing out your credit cards and you don't want anywhere else to go.
Yes, I did hear some of what that difference is. And then does that, would that impact a rating, auditing at all? If we were at the cap without, we reflect it back in the back of the head.
Well, so we, auditors don't rate the rating agencies such as Fitch and Standard and Horace and movies, but there are agencies that do that. But they do look if your debt low and they do look at your, you know, just like your credit card company looks at if you're you're bouncing up to your max on your credit card, same type of thing. You know, roughly, you could take roughly ten percent of the tax value of the city as your as your cap, crack that what you already have out there. Just as a rough number, but so you're not, you're not close to that. And then of course it matters whether it's a water and sewer or a general obligation. And so there's, there are a lot of intricacies of that, just like you were saying.
And if we were to propose a village, does that impact any part of the audit? There is a separate, there's special village by your own, does that impact? In terms of like upgrading or?
Okay, so there are certain. Sure. So yes and no. I'm reporting on historical information. Meaning so my, this opinion tells you that these numbers are fairly present. So I'm talking about historical, but does that mean I wouldn't make a comment that you're, you know, you're you've got way too much debt for a city this size type of thing? Currently you do not. That's, I'm not commenting on that, but I'm saying yes, I could make a comment in a management letter or something like that. Also, the other thing, which the city is nowhere near, so one of the things as auditors we have to look for are what we call going to certain communities. Meaning they don't have cash flow to get through fossil months, you know. So those are kind of the things that auditors do give opinions on. But you're, you know, the city of Dexter has always been very well run. We don't usually, but we do, we are aware of it and we are conscious of it. We, you know, we don't take that for granted. We're looking. You don't, you don't look low, so we're not worried. Thank you. I don't think Sean would sleep it.
So Murray, do you recall what our tax value is roughly, two forty? So the big idea is two hundred and forty, you know. So ten percent, you know, back is around twenty four, most of my insurance.
I, I can tell you, stupid, it doesn't exist now, next miss, we're not waiting till this, that's more stuff. And then on the question of the modern villages. I'm, I'm trying to dredge into the background by memory, so please don't pull me on our purposes. But I believe that modern villages are not part of the cap. Are they, Rayna?
The cap as far as?
The dead one? Are they from the calculations? Do you know how repubis are?
Well, that's a, that's a separate thing, repubis are, I mean, it depends if it's a water or sewer fund, a repubis fund. Meaning you're pledging based on the users of the system.
Because the voters, we're not pledging the general application of the city, we're pledging a specific village. Or, again, it's still the whole faith in front of the state, so I guess.
Still general application.
Forget what I just said. There is, there is a pollution made upon.
Right. And I believe we have a lot of that information from a few years ago, you know, what would, what would, what would it into that class?
Yeah, budget, yeah, budget time is a great time to get into.
Yeah, Margaret, you're right. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate the council's, you know, everyone is great to work with here. I really appreciate, especially in these, these times of in person, remote, we do a little bit, a little bit of everything. And everyone's very accommodating and I really appreciate that and appreciate council's support.
Be safe getting home, please.
Thank you.
Okay, we will redo in the reports. Murray, I believe you're outside. Okay, so Dr. J two, our public services superintendent.
Assistant.
And our assistant. And Jim Joe.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, good.
Good. So obviously this is a two or both services. Two questions.
Thank you. What's your favorite sculpture?
Guess I gotta get down there, I didn't realize until today it was open, so.
Other questions on the report?
Yeah, they're gonna be coming in in the morning. I did talk to Kirk, so it'll be in the morning. Another thing too is that you guys should have gotten magazines in your boxes. This is, if you go through and read it, it's a really good report, explains everything, basically the history of the sewer department, everything that's gone through and everything we've done. Since the beginning and I actually read it for the first time today, it's pretty thorough.
Yeah, we'll get to that in the next meeting.
Oh, sorry. I'm bad, Justin, sorry. Another thing too is that, I would like to thank Justin, you actually hired an employee for my replacement. Actually, I'm in for the utilities department and we did it in less than a month. So it turned out really good.
Her great important guest, her name, oh, utilities operator. She's about a ten and she's been working out really well.
Yes, she's fitting really well, she's doing really well as far as knowledge really quick, catching on to things very quickly, actually. And we're hoping to get her in some type of rotation within the next month or two. It's crashboards, but she's handling, she's handling really good software products.
Is she come from?
She's right out of University of Michigan. She graduated, I think, in May in environmental science. So, and she's, she's doing phenomenal, actually. Any questions?
That's all I said.
Good.
Everybody good to go? All right, we'll keep saying more.
Thanks.
Thank you, Justin. And Zach, I thought this was our easy roll, man. So, how are you?
I'm fine, I'm chilled up tonight.
Good.
Excellent, excellent. I take you down. Before I go into my update, do you have any questions or comments for me? Okay, so we're piggybacking off what John brought up, the ice, the ice box. It was very, very nice. I didn't get to see it on Friday when they were firing. But my husband and I did come in Saturday night to look at the sculpture. It was pretty darn cold. There were a few people out though. The sculptures were beautiful. The DDA did sponsor one. I was really impressed with what it looked like. Although I have to say hearts and flowers with the rose in the middle, you know, kind of, you know, it just, it just took the cake there. The, it appears that the Dexter Crossing Shopping Plaza may be selling soon, Dexter Crossing Shopping Plaza. So they'll have a, potentially a new owner. I don't know when this is gonna happen, but it, it's, it sounds like it's moving forward. So, so that's Oxford Zone. We have an appraisal on the thirty forty five Broad Street redevelopment project. It was something that the DDA had requested last year when it put out its RFP for development proposals. It's sitting back there on the desk. It's about that, that if anybody would like a copy, I'm happy to forward it to you, just send me an email. The presentation to planning commission for this February meeting will be a full review of all of the changes to the zoning ordinance. It's the first time it's going to planning commission for their full review. There've been some minor changes from the last zoning update committee meeting. So if there's anybody that would like a hard copy, that I mean, call up anybody, just send me an email, let me know and I will get that. The zoning ordinance subcommittee will get updates to theirs and any planning commissioners will get theirs as well.
Is there a special, or are you not participating with public hearings about that? What do you need to plan a public hearing?
The public hearing won't come until planning commission has had one more joint meeting with the council. And we're fairly confident that the, that the update is in the form that we're ready to go with. No more substantive changes, little formatting ones that always seems to be there though. But we're more sure that it's, it's the final document, which I'm anticipating May, June at the very latest. My goal is that this project is wrapped up by the end of the fiscal year. Excuse me, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
When are you thinking that from getting to take place?
Probably March. Because there will be some questions that will be found both in the planning commission and council to discuss. And so I'm anticipating at this point that it may be a March meeting. That way, April is our cleanup month and May is appropriate. I see it in my mind, I'm working. Let's see if it actually works out. Okay. The outdoor service area tax amendment, I'm taking that to planning commission this month. Not a full, here are the changes that we're anticipating, more on the discussion. Currently, the ordinance requires the barricades to be provided by an applicant. And the barricades are based on those orange and white water filled barricades. We'll tweak it to make it a little clearer as to what are various types of barricades that could be used. And I will be looking for feedback from both the planning commission and city council as to what's the what type of barricades are going to be acceptable and which ones aren't. It was clear that the orange and white ones, it's not that they weren't good barricades, it's just, they look horrible. If, if the community wishes or desires to have that type of a substantive barrier, our next step is to look at things like something that's similar in shape, but concrete, but that can be painted. Or we go back to the same barricade and we invest in coverings that would cover the barricades, so you don't see what it looks like. So it literally is better type material, like we add banners, only it goes over the entire barricade and it goes for as long as you want. Like a slipcover. Okay. But there'll be more to come on that. And lastly, I should hear tomorrow if my daughter's going to film and have the babies. So if that is the case, then I will probably be out almost three. They are nearly six pounds each. This five toothy little thing is carrying twelve pounds of baby. I'm five eight, she was only eight pounds. This is I don't know, so. Thank you, thank you. Yes, so unless you have any other questions, that's all I've got tonight.
I just got one for God. Is there, I don't remember talking too much about the barricades. Is there other orders, dislike of the orange and white barricades?
They're gonna be permanent, I'm having to get this out. I guess I pulled up some right now.
Tax amendment, a lot of people are monitoring, like, I remember on the DDA, there was some talk about they didn't like the blue barricade or the blue.
Yeah, we would have, we would have. And right, it was the orange and white. It also didn't like, in the beginning, there wasn't a lot of unhappiness with the the blue pallet design that, that one of the businesses used. By the end of the season though, it was, there were more vocal, there were more people that were vocally opposed to the look. It's the aesthetics of that, so.
Okay, I, 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 I'm all for words, I have too many comments, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I would, I would like to throw into the mix though that we did read those.
Correct.
I don't necessarily want advice on super extensive ones sold out. Those can meet our needs, so I would want to consider that.
And the other thing is, and I'm going to have this presentation for the planning commission, is the parklets for where they're now following the street areas. They, they literally can, can be they're very easy, you can do them for as little as a box of dollars, depending on the equipment you use. So all of that is really going to be on a business. But the barricaded thing we need to use, whether the city can or DDA can runs it, or we expect a business to do it, we need to be able to give them balance on what types of barricades we want. Basically this exercise.
That, my humble sense here, I've sat in some places outside where it's basically a pallet next to traffic and that didn't really enjoy that sensation. I have seen, I've been at places where it's two lane traffic with parallel parking and they have just the bumper stops there. That felt better. I think though for our traffic volume, I, I personally would give a more, something more substantive, especially for curb, I can imagine people tweeting that, if it's concrete, I like the idea of painting it, getting it to the high school or doing the fancy stuff out there. Perhaps on the side, along the parking, that's where I could see something less intense, like the curb stop. And then something like that.
How do you feel about heavy duty jet planters? Whether they're round or square, they wouldn't be like one right next to the other, but maybe you'd have, you know, say this was the front edge. You know, you have one on each corner and a couple, you know, two or three. And then something minor in the middle to prevent, it would be too small for a vehicle to come through. Is something like that acceptable? Those are the kinds of alternatives that would be helpful to know as well. Okay, thank you.
We got a sheriff report. I really have a lot of questions on that one, Sheriff. See, now I'm gonna move to the city manager report.
Justin? Sure, so you have your board packet, it's also supplement on the people. Just a couple of minor items. And then if you have any questions? Something that I don't have a lot more for you, it's about the.
Boy, that's good.
Yeah, we're really excited about that. We also, we are in the process of scheduling interviews for a new associate planner. And we are also in the process of scheduling interviews for the DDA assessing field order. Samantha, our farmer parking group was helping her react with assessing duty over the summer. And it was her fourth day, that's not what she, she enjoyed doing. So we're, relaying her into helping out with paint extrusion, which we're really excited about. So in her stead, we're looking for something sort of assessing field. A lot, a lot of sad stuff.
Remember the time right off the next newsletter?
So probably here in the next month, month and a half. But I know you're looking, you're talking about including information about the survey in a newsletter. So, yeah, I can, I don't want to say I can go on tomorrow, but I can, I can rush a newsletter to get it out to coincide with information about the, the survey.
The reason I ask is that I started rushing about the state of the city.
And I think we usually put that in the spring edition.
Okay, if everyone makes more sense.
Um, the, the sort of reminder is this piece about the B two B trail leading to, are we talking about the Bell Road Bridge being used still or what? Tell me.
So I, I mean, the, the last that helpful talk about it, I think there was still a rest in using the B two B trail.
Okay, so I'm worried.
Yeah, and, and, and the feeling that I got from helpful was that the preference is to maintain the crossings near horizontal, some areas of the primary route across the grid.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I fell in there. That telling me because I had drive by the Robert Stevens, B two B trail, that thing is gorgeous, so I think that's really nice. Thank you.